Everyone, please stand for the indication given by Trevor Senior Executive Director, St. John's River Baptist Association. Is he present? Okay. Okay, Commissioner Campbell? Please come to the front.
Everyone, please bow their head. There in Palaka, I would thank you for this day, this day that we've never seen, your burning grace and your mercy that you bestowed upon us. As we go forth in this meeting, we ask that you give us the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that will be able to move this city forward. In your name, amen.
Stand up. All right, remain standing. We'll call you everyone, please lead us in the political way.
(Inaudible) United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please be seated. Clerk, will you please call the votes?
Mr. Mayor, as I call your name, please stand. Mayor Rennie Sanders.
Present.
Vice Mayor Cody Elam.
Present.
Commissioner Lizeth Aboetes.
Present.
Commissioner Bryce Bullem.
Present.
Commissioner Cameron Tucker.
Present.
All members of the honorary students and government council are present.
Thank you, we have a form. Commissioner Elam, will you please join me?
We, the members of the City and Palaka Youth Council, would like to read a proclamation recognizing Friday, October 27th, as Job for Florida Graduates Awareness Week. Whereas, Job for Florida Graduates is a school-to-career program designed to help young people graduate from high school and thereby building confidence to move on to gainful employment or post-secondary education. And whereas, JFG Scouts recruit, coaches, and prepares talented kids to maximize opportunities as they move through the turbulent waters of middle school and help them learn to make real-world decisions in middle school and high school. And whereas, JFG treasure hunters are the personal guidance counselors whose job it is to help JFG participants achieve their goals. In the classroom or on the web, they shepherd, lead, guide, and mentor middle and high school students around the barriers and pitfalls that can derail a kid's future by helping them stay focused on college career planning, career exploration, course planning, leadership development, and academic success by helping them build and plan around their talents and strengths. And whereas, 97% of the JFG students realize their dream of graduating from high school. 93% of JFG alumni realize their goal of getting a job, joining the military, or going to college. And 98% of the JFG middle school students who are now in high school. And whereas, even if JFG isn't available at your school, students can get help from the EJFG virtual treasure hunters by visiting the JFG website at www.flgraduates.com. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City and Palaka Students and Government, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, do hereby proclaim Friday, October 27th, 2017, as Job for Florida Graduates Awareness Day. And we hereby encourage all middle school and high school students to stop dreaming and start planning for success and take their destinies into their own hands by joining a Job for Florida Graduates program, either in your school or online, because our futures and our destiny and our decision. And witness whereof, we hereunto set our name and call to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaka, Florida, on this 26th day of October in the year of our Lord 2017.
Okay, I now call Commissioner Campbell, Ms. Perry, and Representative for Palaka High School, too, to have him in place.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to stand before you on this evening. The proclamation that we have here today, I am honored to give to our representatives from Palaka High School as well as Crescent City High School. I've had the opportunity to work with the individuals that you have on the platform here today, and I'm excited at what they've accomplished in just short time. It is not easy getting up in front of a bunch of strangers and talking, and they've done so well thus far, and we are thankful for that. But I've had the opportunity to speak to Crescent City High School, Jobs for the Graduates, and the knowledge and the skills that they're getting through this program are things that is going to help them for the remainder of their lives, job skills, all of those things. And I'm excited to be a part of that, and I'm excited that it's on all three high school campuses here in Putnam County. And for that, we have a proclamation that will go to Palaka High School and Crescent City, just to show you that we appreciate you and the work that you are doing with our students to prepare them for our future, and we'll make sure that we get it to you. We have one for Ms. Perry, and then we have another one that is, we're going to ask our mayor to present it again, thank you, as she did. So thank you so much, round of applause.
All right, I will now entertain any motions. Commissioner, a form.
I would like to make a motion to have a Starbucks employee.
I second that.
Okay, the motion has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Right.
Motion.
Where would it be located?
I think it should be located in the mall.
Second, I agree. Okay, and what about population count? We do need a population count because the franchise will not grant it if we don't have a population count. How would we go without getting a population count?
We could give them land, anything to go on, but if we would do that, it wouldn't be near the mall.
That's right.
We'd get a population count from U.S.
Is there any more discussion?
Call the question.
All right, are you ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this motion passed. Does anyone else care to make a motion?
I have a motion on the floor to develop an after-school/evening indoor recreational cafe program for the Putnam County High School students.
I second that.
Okay, the motion has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
What would the congregation be of?
I believe we would rotate between high schools and we'd probably, you know, set an appointment to do a quarterly between the high schools and the county. Is there any more discussion?
How would we fund those programs?
Donations and sponsorships.
Sponsorships? We could do fundraisers also. Is there any more discussion on that?
Would we have any liability issues with the school since it is funded already?
Right, if we did have any liability issues, I believe we could make some sort of form of some sort of agreement, you know, to provide.
And what kind of activities are we going to be having?
The school can provide Wi-Fi, and we could, like, I know some schools, they do roller skating, and they do just like study halls, but not necessarily just study halls where it's a bunch of kids in a quiet room, but actually like communicating and mingling and helping each other with their assignments, those sort of activities. Is there any more discussion? Okay, are you ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this motion passed. This concludes the items on our special agenda. As there is no further business to conduct, I hereby adjourn this meeting of Palaka High School and Crescent City Students and Government. Mayor Hill, I'm ready to really push the gavel to the roof.
I'm ready for the new indoor recreation and also Starbucks.
Good evening. Isn't it wonderful to see our young people hard at work? Chance for us to really see and invest in our young leaders, and so I want to make sure I give our students and government another round of applause for an awesome job. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at this time. We'll go ahead and have a roll call at this time.
Mayor Hill?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Present.
Commissioner Borum?
Pro.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
Commissioner Wiggins?
Here.
All members are present, accounted for, and you have a form.
Has everyone had an opportunity to look at the minutes from the October 12th, 2017 regular scheduled meeting?
Motion to...
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, second, by Commissioner Borum. Is there any further discussion? Questions, call all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our agenda items. Item number one on the agenda is public recognitions and presentations, and we have a few tonight. Our first proclamation, score. So before we do that, I'm going to call Mr. Relza right now. So we're going to take, we're going to take a point of privilege.
Yeah, I just want to take a quick minute. Good evening, commissioners and everyone. Just want to introduce a new employer, first day was today, our accounting supervisor, Ms. Jill Kaiser. She's in the back. Thank you. So I just wanted to take a, take a chance to introduce Mrs. Kaiser, and so everybody is aware of her.
Thank you for the opportunity to introduce myself to the community here. This is my first day of work here, so I just recently moved into the Putnam County community. Real happy to be here.
Thank you. Now we're going to ask Ms. Allison Struthers, if she would come forward at this time. Ms. Allison Struthers. So we'll go ahead and read this proclamation. Do we have Sue Ellen Jackson from Hospice of Citrus and Nature Coast? Sue Ellen Jackson. Everybody's here one time. So. So I'll read both proclamations. First proclamation is for World Pancreatic Cancer Day. Whereas, in 2015, an estimated 365,000 cases of pancreatic cancer were diagnosed globally, and it is estimated that 418,000 people will be diagnosed globally in 2020. Every day, more than 1,000 people worldwide will be diagnosed, and 985 will die from the disease. And whereas, pancreatic cancer is the seventh biggest cancer killer among men and women, and deaths are the highest among those ages 65 to 74. Each year, more men are diagnosed and die of this disease than women. Many times, it goes undiagnosed until it's too late to effectively treat, as reflected in our dire survival rate of 3% to 6%, which hasn't improved for more than 40 years. And whereas, pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits. When symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 93% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years, while death rates are declining for most of other cancers. Studies show that death rates for pancreatic cancer are increasing in the United States and Europe. And whereas, more awareness and understanding about the illness among public medical communities and government, and more investments and more interest in the disease will allow more people to be diagnosed in time for surgery, which is currently the only potential for a cure. Whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of the City of Palaka are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, Florida, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, do hereby recognize and endorse November 16th, 2017, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in the City of Palaka, and hereby encourage the citizens of Palaka to observe the day by contacting the Putnam County Health Department to inquire about pancreatic cancer screening programs available locally, as well as any other information regarding early detection. And witness whereof, I've hereunto set my hand and call to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaka, Florida, on this 26th day of October in the year of our Lord 2017. Sheriff Hill Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill Williams, Commissioners, I entertain a motion at this time.
Motion approved.
There's a motion on the floor, the second, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Skip a round of applause. Now, if I could have my council come up at this time, my student council, can the Commissioner please come back for me? Commissioner Campbell, if you would join me as well. We've got certificates for you. It's called the Good Citizenship Award, and it's presented to each individual as honorary JFG City official students and government, presented by the City Commission of the City of Palaka, Florida, in recognition of conspicuous display of citizenship and commitment to good government, awarded this 26th day of October in the year of our Lord 2017. And the first one is Rennie Sanders. Next up, Coley Elam. Lizeth Aboetes. Bryce Bullem. Cameron Tucker. And again, we thank you guys for participating today. That's been a wonderful job, job well done. We also want to make sure we recognize Ms. Betsy Driggers and the work that she did with these young folks. This is something that's very dear and dear to her heart. And so again, Commissioner Campbell, we thank you for the work that you've done in this project as well, and we look forward to more great things out of you young people. Okay? Thank you very much. Try this again. Ms. Sue Ellen Jackson. Well, we'll go ahead and read the proclamation. This proclamation is for National Hospice and Palliative Care Awareness. Whereas, hospice and palliative care offer the highest quality of services and support to patients and family caregivers facing serious and life-limiting illness, hospice and palliative care providers take time and pride to ask important questions to those that care for and listen to what their patients and families say. And whereas, skilled and compassionate hospice and palliative care professionals, including physicians, nurses, social workers, therapists, counselors, health aides, and clerks, provide comprehensive care focused on the wishes of each individual patient. And whereas, through pain management and symptom control, caregiver training and assistance and emotional and spiritual support allowing patients to live fully up until the final moments, surrounded and supported by faces of loved ones, friends, and committed caregivers. And whereas, provision of quality hospice and palliative care affirms our belief in the essential dignity of every person regardless of age, health, or social status, and that every stage of human life deserves to be treated with the utmost respect and care. Whereas, every year, more than 1.5 million Americans living with life-limiting illnesses and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States. While more than 468,000 trained volunteers contribute 22 million hours of service to hospice programs annually, and whereas, the hospice and palliative care providers encourage all people to learn more about options of care and to share their wishes with family, loved ones, and their healthcare professionals. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, Florida, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, do hereby endorse and proclaim November 2017 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Awareness Month in the City of Palaka, and we encourage all citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life and to observe this month with the appropriate activities and programs. And witness whereof, I've hereunto set my hand and call to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaka, Florida, on this 26th day of October in the year of our Lord 2017. Sheriff Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill Williams, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Skip a round of applause for proud of our hospital. Our next proclamation is for Children's Grief Awareness Day. Do we have a representative here for this proclamation?
Yes, the same representative, Chris for the hospice and, um, she knows what I'm making here.
Proclamation reads as follows: Whereas children who have a loved one, especially a close family member, experience intense inner turmoil, and whereas, school districts have students who have experienced personal loss, and there are more grieving children than most of us realize. And whereas, on April 7th, 2011, the Florida Legislature resolved to observe Children's Grief Awareness Day in Florida annually on the Thursday before Thanksgiving. And whereas, Children's Grief Awareness Day provides an opportunity for all of us to raise awareness of the painful impact that the depth of a loved one has in the life of a child, and the opportunity for all of us to recognize and support the millions of grieving children across the nation, the thousands of grieving children right in our own community, and the grieving children we know and see in our daily lives. And whereas, parental grief is boundless and touches every aspect of a parent's being. And whereas, Harry's Kids Pediatric Services provides specialized services to children and teens with life-threatening illnesses and offers grief support and therapeutic kits for young people and their loved ones who have experienced a loss. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, Florida, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, do hereby proclaim Thursday, November 16th, 2016, as Children's Grief Awareness Day in the City of Palaka, Florida, and applaud the work currently being accomplished and support grieving children on their journey towards hope after a loved one dies. And witness whereof, I've hereunto set my hand and call to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaka, Florida, on this 26th day of October in the year of our Lord 2017. Sheriff Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill Williams, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. So Mayor, you got off easy, you only read one. National Runaway Prevention Month. Cindy Starlin and Lee Ramsey.
Lee Ramsey.
Glad to have you, Ms. Ramsey. This proclamation reads as follows: Whereas, the future well-being of our nation is dependent on the value we place on our young people, we must provide opportunities for youth to acquire the knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary to develop into healthy and productive adults. We must also enlist their families and other adults in the community to serve as mentors and role models for young people, guiding them towards wise choices and available resources and supports. Whereas, the young people with the least access to these essential opportunities and supports are those in runaway and homeless situations. Across the United States, between 1.6 and 2.8 million youth run away annually. These young people come from every life circumstance, but what they share in common is that their home environments are unsafe and unhealthy. If all of us work together, we can prevent the situation that compels youth to run away from home. Whereas, the City of Palaka supports the efforts of the community-based, faith-based, and public organizations in the community who are diligently working to increase public awareness about, advocate on behalf of, and provide positive and safe alternatives to runaway and homeless youth and their families. Now, therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, Florida, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, do hereby recognize and endorse November 2017 as National Runaway Prevention Month in the City of Palaka, and we hereby call upon all citizens of Palaka to observe this month by supporting young people who have run away or who are at high risk of doing so by developing a personal relationship with them, teaching them skills that will promote positive life choices, providing a safety net of trusted friends, adults, and resources to them, and being available to them as they transition to adulthood. And witness whereof, I've hereunto set my hand and call to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaka, Florida, on this 26th day of October in the year of our Lord 2017. Sheriff Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill Williams, Commissioners. Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Ms. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Hill and City Commission. CBS Family Behavioral Health Services has been in Putnam County for the last 20 years. We provide free residential and non-residential counseling services to youth ages 6 to 17. We work with those high-risk populations who are at risk for running away, true and unremovable, those who are runaway or habitual runaways, and on the verge of possibly being homeless, or throwaway kids who are asked to leave their home by their parents for whatever reason. As he said, you know, between 1.6 and 2.8 million youth run away every year, and of those youth, about half will spend at least a night on the streets or outside of their own homes. We do know that one of the number-one risk factors for human trafficking victims is to actually be in runaway. So that population is very vulnerable, and we're just doing what we can to put information out there for kids who feel like their only option is to run away. In 2014, we started the Safe Place Program. It's a national runaway prevention program, and you might see signs around the community that say Safe Place on them. Those are places where you can go and seek help if they have run away or maybe you have run away. So we really appreciate you guys for recognizing this, the second year in a row, and we hope that... that this is something we'll continue to see grow in the community, is this knowledge.
Thank you for your help. Thank you. Next up is Red Ribbon Week. This Beverly Bear, Palaca High School. Or Coach Wilkerson from Palaca High School. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you too, sir.
It's great to see you, a high school baseball coach, and he's not yelling at you. But he only yelled football. Thank God you're smart. He's mild at baseball. So our proclamation reads as follows: Whereas cities across America have been plagued by numerous problems associated with alcohol, cabo, and other drug use. And whereas there is high hope in winning the war on drugs, and the hope lies in the hard work and determination of our communities to create a drug-free environment, local leaders in government and in the community know that the support of the people in neighborhoods is the most effective tool. And whereas success will not occur overnight, therefore our patience and continued commitment to drug education and prevention are imperative. And whereas the red ribbon was chosen as the symbol commemorating the work of Enrique Kiki Camarino, a drug enforcement administrative agent who was murdered in the line of duty and has come to represent the belief that one person can make a difference. The Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988 to promote this belief and encourage a drug-free lifestyle and involvement in drug prevention efforts. And whereas the Red Ribbon Campaign held annually during the week of October 23 through 31st is now the oldest and largest drug prevention program in the nation, reaching millions of young people. And whereas 2017 Red Ribbon theme is "Your Future Is Your Key, So Stay Drug-Free," helps to broadcast a national message and calls on all Americans to show their support for a drug-free state by wearing a ribbon as a symbol of intolerance towards the use of illegal drugs and to participate in drug-free activities during the week of October 23 through 31st, 2017. Now therefore, I Tarrell Hill Mayor of the City of Palaca, Florida, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, hereby proclaim October 23 through 31st, 2017 as Red Ribbon Week, 2017, the City of Palaca. And we encourage all citizens, businesses, public and private agencies, media, religious, and educational institutions to wear and display red ribbons and participate in drug-free activities throughout the week, join the rest of the state in promoting Red Ribbon Week. Furthermore, because children whose parents talk to them regularly about drugs are 42% less likely to use drugs than those who don't. I urge all parents to regularly have conversations with their kids. And witness whereof I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaca, Florida, on this 26th day of October in the year of our Lord 2017. Tarrell Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill-Williams, Commissioners. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Coach. Finally, for our students and government, proclamation reads: Whereas city government is the government closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents. And whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Florida City Government Week is very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives. And whereas during Florida City Government Week, the City of Palaca has joined with the Florida League of Cities and its member cities to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And whereas Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that through their civic involvement, they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Florida as follows. Section 1, that the City of Palaca does encourage all citizens, city government officials and employees, to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. 2, that the City of Palaca does encourage educational partnerships between city government and schools. And that the City of Palaca does support and encourage all city governments to actively promote and sponsor Florida City Government Week, which is celebrated in Palaca, Florida during the week of October 23 through October 29, 2017. Tarrell Hill Mayor, Commissioners Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill-Williams. At this time, Ms. Driggers, if you would come over, we're going to present this proclamation to you for the work that you do annually on this project.
Motion. Motion. entertain a motion.
By consensus, is it approved?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say that we've had these kids since 12:30 today. They were very engaged. I want to thank the department heads that came over, talked to them about careers and services in Palaca, Commissioner Campbell, who spent the day with us. It was a lot of fun. Thank you.
So this month, Commissioner Borum has selected Commissioner to help me with this. Student of the Month is probably one of our favorite times. It's one of the few times that the whole room is full without controversy. And so, but we also like to take this time out to make sure that we recognize some important folks in this room today. So a lot of the parents and family members who've come and joined these young folks today, would you please stand at this time? This day truly is impossible without your love and support. It takes a village to raise a child, and definitely it takes a strong family and a support group to have that child truly succeed. We also want to recognize another group of special individuals. They're mostly standing in the back of the room or in the alleys, but those individuals are educators. We've got a couple educators who sit up here on the commission as well, and it's about four of us who worked in education in some capacity. And so, we want to make sure that we thank our educators, because a lot of times you guys overlook the sacrifices that you make, both by being away from your families and also the extra amount that you go on your jobs. It sometimes goes unnoticed, but today we want to make sure that we thank you for the love and the care that you've given to these kids. And so again, let's thank our educators. Would you please wave your hand? Now with all that said, Student of the Month has been canceled until next month. So now we're going to go ahead and start our Student of the Month presentations. That's the moment that most of you have been waiting for. We'll ask the representatives from the schools to join the students as they come forward. Once all the awards have been presented, at that time, we'll take a brief recess. We'll take a photo for the newspaper, and then we'll also have the students line up individually to take photos. If family members want to join in to commemorate the moment, you can. So we'll do that. We'll take a recess after we go ahead, after we go through our presentations. First up, from Brown and Pierce Elementary School, Callie Davis. Congratulations. I'm going to take a wild guess that I'm Ty Davis. From CL Lower 10th Grade Center, Colleen Slowen. From Children's Radiance Center Charter School, Adeline Edwards. Isn't she cute?
Yeah.
Like that outfit.
Her hair's pretty.
From E.H. Miller School, Tatiana Graham. From James A. Long Elementary, Hayden Lance. The shortest kid in this photograph, from Jenkins Middle School, Dante Wilkerson. From Mosley, Jayleni Santiago. Jayleni, congratulations. Dante, you're not the tallest today. From Palaca High School, Little Joshua Reynolds. He grew after ninth grade. From Palaca High School, Courtney Tillis. With a lot of enthusiasm. From Penile Baptist Academy, Chandler Muse. I will try not to butcher this. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, Anaria Whitfield. I know I'm going to mess this up. From Putnam Academy Edge High School, I'm sorry, from Putnam Edge High School, Peyton Kalazewski. Oh, you're taking cake. I had it. And also for Palaca High School, we've got your flag for this year as well. For your academic leadership, Coach Wilkerson. Something that I always do when we do Student of the Month, and I like to share this because I heard it when I was in third grade, and we said it every day. And it's something that stuck with me many, many years later, almost 40 years later. And it simply says, "I am somebody. If my mind can conceive it and my heart can believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." Each and every one of you standing here today, you're somebody. You're somebody special, and you're somebody destined for greatness. The reason you're standing here today is because you take education seriously and you take your citizenship seriously. So we want to see you continually do great things so that you can lead this community and that we can all continue to be proud of you, because you are truly somebody, and we are definitely proud of you, and we love you in the City of Palaca. So again, let's give them a round of applause. At this time, we'll take a brief recess. We're going to ask all students to line up across the front, and we'll take our full take photographs. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting back to order. Item 2 on the agenda is public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. New action will be taken on topics of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? Seen no one, but close public comment. Item 3 on the agenda is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this week, item 8 is adopted resolution 2017-13-05, awarding RFP 2017-15 wastewater treatment plan agricultural lease to Tater Farms LLC as sole bidder authorized with city attorney and city staff to negotiate lease agreement. B, adopted resolution number 2017-13-06, awarding athletic turf mowing maintenance bid to Agro Pro Incorporated in amount $33,150 per year, and authorize execution of the contract for services, per results of invitation to bid ITB 2017-17. C, special events permit number 17-52, grant permission to exceed allotment noise levels close to South 14th Street between Crystal Avenue and Diana Drive, and a portion of Diana Drive west of South 14th Street into Wave Avenue. Application deadline for the Palaca Pride Farm Festival on Saturday, October 28, 2017, from 10 o'clock a.m. until 4 p.m. D, adopt city commission holiday meeting scheduled November 16 and December 14, 2017. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have? Second. There's a motion on the floor and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries unanimously. Moving the agenda to item 4. Public hearing, public hearing ordinances, 26 parcels of Comfort Road, Crystal Cove Road, proposed RV park planning board, recommendations to amendment for land use map from residential medium RM to recreation REC, and to rezone the property from R3 multifamily residential to ROS, recreation and open space, Riverwalk LLC applicant.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official future land use map and future land use of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the long parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size, from RM residential medium density to REC recreation for 26 parcels located north and east of the intersection of Comfort Road and Crystal Cove Road located in section 37, township down south, range 26 east, and providing for separability and providing an effective.
entertain a motion at this time, if I move. There's a motion on the floor and a second. We're now up on the floor. Public hearing. Mr. Taylor, you have a card for public hearing.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Your Honor. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you tonight. With all due respect, at your last meeting, Mr. Douglas handed you for the record a petition assigned by the owners of our Crystal Cove neighborhood requesting that you deny the applicant's request to change the comprehensive man plan and not to rezone the subject project, property. Concerns we repeatedly raised included higher traffic volumes, single road access to our Crystal Cove neighborhood, leaving us as an island community, inadequacy of existing infrastructure, road, sewage treatment, and stormwater runoff, incompatibility of the proposed use versus the serenity and security of our families, and potential detrimental impact on our property values and aesthetic appeal of our homes and property. We understand the need for progress. It's my livelihood. It's how I work. But why must our neighborhood, one of the nicest in Palaca and Putnam County, be sacrificed to the lowest bidder? Why is it, if this opinion is turned down, the threat of something less desirable is considered as the only perceived alternative? Why isn't there a viable option like the one that originally swayed our neighborhood to support changing the zoning in the first place to allow R3 zoning on the promise of a previous property owner to build charming condominiums and/or townhouses as an incentive to new residents? Mr. Crowe has made a gallant effort to change the Mr. Crowe has made a gallant effort to change the ordinance presented to the commission at the last meeting and respond to comments and questions as he perhaps continued to change the document. I've reviewed several revisions. Mr. Salafrio and I have proposed options and revisions since our last meeting. Have you had time to thoroughly review the documents? We have appealed to the commission to reject Mr. Salafrio's application and we continue to appeal for a better community solution. I contend that this whole PUD application and submitted review process and review process has been tainted with errors, inaccuracy, and misinformation. The planning board's recommendation was made because of apparent bias by some members of the planning board who may have felt Crystal Cove neighbors are opposed to RVs and RV owners. Several of our neighbors own RVs. We are longstanding members of the community, many of whom are veterans, who not only pay tax dollars, but have contributed many hours and fill in top, fill in, fill in, fill up. Yes, that too, to worthwhile community services and civic projects. If you are committed to grant your approval tonight, my last appeal is that you include detailed enforcement provisions within the ordinance so that once the project is built and operating, it will be conscientiously maintained as the upscale RV park Mr. Salafrio has promised. Thank you very much. I have copies.
Mr. Mayor members, Carl Salafrio, 6305 North West 79, Terrace, Gainesville. Since the last meeting, essentially, the way the document was changed, I've agreed with all the changes. I have two, except for just two things. One is, the name of the company is, is not correct on the, on the, it should be Riverwatch Partners, Inc. The other change that was made from the 16th version, October 16th version to the October 23rd version was in relation to the onsite manager. The Exhibit 1 allowable uses and development standards, item number 17, now reads, "No RV shall be used as permanent housing and the intent is for visitation and to be transient and recreation related." The last version of that had an exception for the resort manager. I'd like to put that exception back in. So essentially, the 24-hour resort manager, it will be in one particular RV spot, subject to the same rules as the rest of the folks out there, but he is obviously not going to be there just for 15 days. He'll be there essentially permanent.
So you're saying that he's gonna be in an RV?
He'll be in an RV, correct. That was on the version that I got on the 16th, which is what I believe we agreed to. Someone needs to correct me then.
No, I just think that Mr. Taylor was allowed to speak with no interruptions. I think Mr. Salafrio, Salafrio needs to be able to speak without interruption and then Mr. Crowe needs to offer some comments here because it's my understanding, talking to him today, that he's been talking to both sides and attempting to, to reach, if not a consensus, at least a, a simplified version of, and, and maybe just codifying what was discussed at the last meeting into a version that before you did not. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So I'll read what was on the 16th, the version I got of that, which was the one you emailed me on the 16th for item 17. You had that version?
I remember that.
Okay, so all, all it says is that, "No RV shall be used as a permanent housing and the intent is for visitation to be transient and recreation, recreation related," accepting that the 24-hour RV resort manager may utilize one of the RV sites for permanent occupancy within the RV or a permanent structure. That's what I had on the 16th version. And I'm willing to, and I'm willing to compromise on it, Mr. Mayor. I just, I just want to make sure that the record is straight, that that's what I, that's
If I can talk from here, if that's okay. Just to give you a quick recap of where we went after the last.
That you want to identify yourself.
That for a planning director, I'm sorry. After the last meeting, I immediately went through my notes and went through the list of what the residents had brought up and what you all had directed us to modify the ordinance with, which had been agreed to by both parties. It's mostly the same thing. And that's when I put the first ordinance changes through, which I then sent to Mr. Salafrio and to the residents as well. That version did include exemption for the park manager to live in an RV. When finally got some feedback from the residents, one thing they were pretty emphatic on was that they did not want that exemption for the resident manager to live in an RV and they wanted a resident manager to live in a permanent structure, which could be part of the check-in station or something else, but could not be in an RV. I felt like my direction from you all was to basically put in the ordinance things that people agreed on and therefore I took this out. I took the RV manager living onsite, I took that one part out from the ordinance and then supplied both sides with the revised version. Did not include that clause, so I don't feel it was correct.
The ordinance that the commission has in front of it, you might have asked a couple questions. The ordinance that the commission has in front of it right now, doesn't, doesn't specify that the resident manager lives onsite?
Basically, without reading stuff to you, what it does is it clarifies the resident manager. The manager can be one of two people. It can be the resort manager or the Greater Crystal Cove Resort, or it can be a RV park manager strictly. So they can, he really can do either one with this version of the ordinance.
It doesn't require that he live in the park at all?
It does not require that he live in the park. But that's, that's pretty much where we've been all along because the idea was the resort manager, if it's a Crystal Cove resort manager, who does not live in the park, would be manager. So I, I guess what we have is changes, the underlining that you see in here, by and large, these are all things that were agreed upon by both sides. I think there's a little bit of debate still about the eastern fence. I think the residents wanted that to be a wall. I think Mr. Salafrio wants some flexibility on that eastern fence as well, so that might be one issue that has not been settled. In the ordinance before you, there's a very specific kind of fence, which is black wrought iron or decorative aluminum with essentially pillars every eight feet, brick pillars every eight feet.
If I could for the record, I did agree to that and I've stipulated all of these changes that. I'm not making any changes to anything we've already discussed and anything I agreed to. The only thing I wanted to include was the part of the resident manager. And simply because that has to be a 24-hour person, I want the flexibility here with that.
And I think this does provide the ability to have a resident manager in the park, they just have to be in a permanent structure essentially.
Right.
Why, why do they have to be in a permanent structure?
The way the ordinance is written out is all, the check-in station, the clubhouse, everything has to be a permanent structure and the residents did not want an exemption for the residents of the manager.
I don't think, in all fairness, and I've tried not to say too much at all in this process, but you know, zoning is not a question of making sure that those in opposition agree to everything that's in the zoning ordinance. At some point, the commission decides whether or not the criteria for rezoning are met and most of the time, you don't have unanimity among those in opposition and those in favor on every point. That's, quite frankly, you almost reach a point where you're talking about contract zoning when you're trying to get everybody in opposition to agree to everything along with the applicant and you specify every term in a, in a document, it, it almost amounts to contract zoning. So I'm a bit, I mean, it's great if everybody can agree to everything, but it certainly isn't a requirement. As a matter of fact, petitions are specifically by case law and not to be considered. It isn't a vote of those in favor and those in opposition, it's a question of whether or not, the land use issue is one that's been addressed and whether or not it's consistent with our comprehensive plan and whether or not in a PUD, you know, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and any of the criteria that our code provides for approval of zoning. So I guess I'm a little perplexed that we've gotten to the point where we're saying, we're putting things in the ordinance because a resident warned it or didn't want it. I mean, I think that's great for topics of conversation, what we had last month was conversation about what, what do want it, but at some point, the building department needs to, to give you some recommendations about what they feel is necessary in order to meet the criteria of our code for rezoning and then you need to decide if, if unanimity and complete consent can succeed, fantastic, but that's, that's not required for rezoning, it just isn't.
I just have to clarify, I agree with you. I felt like my directive was not to come up with something that was not agreeable with both sides. I mean, I felt like the commission wanted me to sort of put something together, they all agreed on more than that and I didn't want to, I didn't feel I had the authority to put in something that was potentially controversial or not. You were unlimited. I don't think you were limited. Not based on the understanding that I have. But part of the issue, I'm not going to go on too long about this, but part of the problem that the RV itself is going to be utilized is it didn't meet the architectural standards essentially. We were looking for the old floor type and there were no overhanging eaves or no porches. It was essentially a, a nice looking RV, but it didn't meet the architectural standards and it couldn't.
So how does that affect compatibility? I mean, I'm just wondering, how does the issue, if you've got an RV like the other 40 RVs in the park, except some of the resident manager living in it, which occurs in almost every state park that you go into, by the way, how does that affect whether or not that land use is compatible with the surrounding land uses?
I don't think it does. I think if you're looking at the, I don't know what called common building, the term would be, but you're gonna have a clubhouse, a check-in station, and if you're looking at all of these as kind of facilities, park facilities, then you probably could classify the manager's residence as a park facility that's subject to the architectural standards, but you don't have to. I mean, it's really up to the commission.
I would just indulge some flexibility on this item. I'm, I'm willing to change it a little bit if that's what the, the, makes it work, but essentially, I just want a little flexibility. I don't want to have to build a permanent structure for a resident manager. That, that's all I'm saying.
You have anything else?
I have nothing else.
Mr. Douglas.
Charlie Douglas, 601 St. God's Avenue, on behalf of neighbors in the Crystal Cove neighborhood. There are only a few things that are outstanding remaining that we would ask the commission to consider. First one to thank, to add to the building department for trying to put together those items where there is common agreement. It took a long time for the neighbors and many neighbors are still not there to agree to an RV park at all. So we appreciate the commission attempting to strike a balance that is mutually beneficial to all sides, that everybody can be in agreement with and Mr. Salafrio and residents have attempted in these last couple of weeks to reach that point and we're getting very close and we thank you for that. The first one is, the first item, I only have three today, so it's a lot shorter than the last one, is the timing of the certificate of occupancy. We would ask that no certificate of occupancy be granted until the development standards in exhibit, in the exhibits of the ordinance have been met. The reason for that is that we don't want it to be kind of a half start where you might have a, a park with the roads, but not the gates or the fence and we just want everything to come up and operate at the, at the same time. Secondly, we would ask that there be a concurrency reservation certificate associated with this project. I'm not sure if there has been one yet, but there are very legitimate concerns from some of the neighbors that the lift station that supports the sewage in that area has already been overwhelmed in the past on multiple occasions. So what type of a burden this new RV park would add to that already overloaded lift station is a concern. So there is a concurrency management section in our code, chapter 54, section 196 through 212, and we would ask those be adhered to strictly before a certificate of occupancy is granted. And last, I want to address the issue of transient versus non-transient RVs. We, the neighbors have a concern that Mr. Salafrio or some other successor interests in the next 30 years may have an idea to go to Camping World and purchase 30 RVs and set them up in the park and rent the RVs out by the weekend and kind of like an Airbnb type style of a resort facility and that's, that's not the intent of what this ordinance is about, but we want to be very clear in the ordinance so that nobody later can come down the line and try to pull it into an interpretation that no one intended. So to address that, I would propose in Exhibit 1, Section 17, that we include the language that, "No RV owned by the applicant, operator, owner, successor, or related entity there shall be placed anywhere on the site," so that the RVs that are coming there, the people who are there on the weekend or during the week, and that it belongs to those transients and not belonging to the owner or operator of the site.
So if the owner wants to bring his RV down in the park for a weekend, he can't do it?
Yes, sir.
If the owner wants to bring his RV down for the weekend in park, he can't do it?
Fifteen days.
No, he said it can't be onsite. He said no RV owned by the owner can be onsite.
I'm just proposing some language and for that particular circumstance that if, if he were there for 15 days, that would be acceptable to the neighbors, but past that, we don't want a situation where, like as I've described, that is stationary, it's rented out by the weekend on Airbnb. That no RV or permanent structure shall be used for.
The difference is the risk that the RV that the outside manager would be having a good security factor and bring down those walls on the scale.
Yeah, that, you know, the, the area around it would suffer, the, the site, the lot site that it was hit on would be at risk for accumulating items.
Bricks will get dirty?
No, not, not the bricks, different things.
There's papers on the apron. There's papers on that site, on the pad. So it's a, it's a, it's gonna be a paper pad, so what's the, what's the risk?
The, the risk is that items might be popping up that don't follow the, the intent of the exhibit and the development standards, whether clotheslines or window AC units or things of that nature that might be a technical violation, but the enforcement issue is the concern because when those items come up that are not in congruence with the development standards, it's going to be tough to enforce that. That's why the neighbors would request their commissioners be sensitive to these items on the front end in recognition that enforcing it later, we all know, is, is tough.
Charlie, I believe you brought up last time, or maybe Mr. Taylor did, the issue of owner occupied RVs and if I'm not mistaken, Mr.
That's why the neighbors would request their commissioners be sensitive to these items on the front end in recognition that enforcing it later, we all know, is tough.
Thank you. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Charlie, I believe you brought up last time, or maybe Mr. Taylor did, the issue of owner occupied RVs. And if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Salafrio, you came up after the meeting and said you were in agreement with that, that essentially the point was made that they didn't want the park to turn into a situation where you put 10 RVs in there that you own and rented them out. And I think even the designation, maybe it was, it may not have been, it may have been Mr. Tingle that came up and said that. And I think you came up afterwards and said, valid point, you agreed to that. Am I not correct?
I think we can hear you from there.
Yeah, that's correct. So Mr. Mayor, just for clarification, the point that Mr. Douglas makes about owner occupied RVs, I think, and Mr. Tingle actually had a nomenclature that I don't recall right now, but he actually had a, he actually had a, two different classifications that he referenced. And he said one had to do with owner occupied RVs and one was the opposite, where you could, the owner of the park could put RVs on-site and rent them out. And that does sound like a legitimate issue if it's to be a transient RV park with owner occupied RVs. And Mr. Salafrio came up after the meeting and said he agreed that he intended to be an owner occupied RV on-site. So, and I don't remember the nomenclature, maybe Mr. Taylor does.
Yeah, there are two statutes that Mr. Tingle had brought to the neighbors' attention. One was Section 598, one was Section 503. I looked at both of those. It's not entirely clear to tag what is going on in this park to one particular statute.
Okay.
So for that reason, we were asking for the language inside the ordinance or the exhibit to spell out the concern that we are trying to avoid, which is non-transient or owner, RV park owner owned RVs coming in there. I proposed some verbiage earlier, but I'm happy if your attorney would propose other verbiage that goes along with what the neighbors and Mrs. Salafrio both agree on, is that we do not want the owner of the RV park to put in their own RVs.
So what if we just said something like, the park owner shall not provide RVs for use by renters or tenants?
That's exactly.
Sound of thumbs up. Mr. Salafrio?
Freeo, I'm sorry, I keep mispronouncing your name.
Okay.
Salafrio.
I apologize, I'll try to get.
Mr. Douglas? Thank you. Is there anyone else here for public hearing? One once. We'll now open the floor for discussion. Any discussion for the commission?
I think we've heard the, we've heard the concerns of both parties. I think there have been substantial dialogue between the residents of Crystal Cove as well as Mr. Salafrio and Riverwatch Partners Incorporated. Let's make sure for the purposes of what we're doing, that name is correct. Riverwatch Partners Incorporated. So if there's no further discussion, the question is, make the motion. The motion, are you okay with the language that was included? Are there any amendments in motion? I guess I asked that first.
I would ask you to, I would suggest, I would ask you to include the language that Mr. Holmes just had as part of that motion.
Mr. Mayor? Can I quickly, from what I heard from Mr. Douglas, number one, no CO, she'll be granted until the development standards are met and certificate of occupancy. Number two, concurrency reservation certificate is required, especially in regard to looking at the lift station. And number three was Mr. Holmes, like, really three things were brought up.
Three things were brought up. We've been in agreement definitely on the last part, which is the language that we grabbed from Mr. Holmes. Anything that you want to?
Can we ask about the concurrency reservation? That, I mean, it's just been brought up. What parameters are there for that? Is that going to open up a, tell me what your thoughts are on the concurrency reservation?
We do concurrency review, it's in our code, we're required to do it. We're informal about it. We don't issue a certificate unless it's requested, but it's really not a problem to do that. That's not a problem.
Something to do already?
Yeah.
I suppose none of these matters.
As far as the CO, I don't have a problem with that either. I mean, that means otherwise, everything has to be in place before they.
Well, it should be, shouldn't it? I mean, there should be all these flags before CO is issued.
Are all those? Mr. Salafrio, I will give you leeway to make one comment. Go ahead. Just want to make sure that we include or not include the part about the resident manager, the onsite resident manager being able to live there full-time in an RV as opposed to a permanent structure. So going back to the language that was on the document on 60. That's all. Everything else that was said, brought up by the attorney is fine. I just want to give us.
I guess I would have to, I don't agree with that. I feel, you know, from the conversations that we've had, that it's supposed to be a permanent structure. I do not agree with the RV. So if that's the case, I rescind my motion. I don't agree with that at all.
What else would he state if you did have a permanent structure?
Well, the.
I don't think there was any conversation in the last meeting about where the manager would stay.
Yeah, and I think part of the reason for this is that, part of the incentive to have the manager there is that they will bring an RV and they will essentially, that's part of their compensation essentially, that they're there full-time and if there's something comes up, they're on-site. I don't have to go call somebody, they're right there. So it actually provides a level of security that I can't provide any other way. So that's the reason for it. And I understand you don't agree, but I'm saying that that's from my perspective why I want it.
All managers doesn't have, all managers don't have to, don't have to own an RV, correct?
Correct. I mean, as much as I, I, I don't. I know, I mean, I agree with the 24 hours, but I just don't agree with the way that it's, I don't agree with the, I agree to a permanent structure and that's just, I just don't agree with other, I don't agree, I'm sorry. And as much as I want this to go through, I cannot, I will not, I don't agree. It's just not a permanent structure.
Is there any amendment state in the clubhouse or any help?
Well, if I build a permanent structure, as indicated, it would be probably part of the clubhouse where it would be expanded and essentially he'd have a place to live right there at the clubhouse. But honestly, I don't see the difference between that and being in an RV.
I'm trying to understand because what Mr. Douglas articulated was remnants of whatever, of him limit on-site. So the concern is he's going to put up a clothesline, he can put up a clothesline behind the clubhouse just as well as behind an RV. So to me, it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense that we're, when we're talking about those concerns, if we're talking about going through, jumping through all these hurdles to put in all of the requests that were made to satisfy the residents' concerns within the general area, over 19 enumerated concerns were addressed based upon everything that's there. He's kind of jumped through every hoop that's there and made a whole bunch of concessions. And I just think that we're at a point where, I mean, you can't get everything you ask for. I mean, if you do, then you're a great negotiator. And the concern, if the concern is what the aesthetics are going to look like with someone living there permanently, they're the same regardless of what structure they're in. And that's the part to me, it's more, it's more controlling. If the norm is that the managers live on-site and they typically live in RVs, then I don't see where the problem is. I mean, we've gone from, we've gone from a fence to, we've looked at the structure, we ask for a brick wall when the wall on the other side is brick and stucco. We've asked for, there's so many other elements in that area that aren't necessarily aesthetically pleasing outside of the home there on Circle Drive. But I think that there have been multiple concessions made and we, they're just over. Each one, I mean, they cost money and.
I mean, I understand, a whole part of me understands. And I mean, I completely agree with, you know, the permanent. But I just voiced my concern about not agreeing, however do I agree with everything else, I do. So I don't know how, I mean, because essentially, no new information should be coming to us at this time anyway.
These are, these are no voices, more recommendations.
I mean, the, I mean, at this point, there's going to be a recommendation every time we have this. So, and I'm not, this is going to continue again, as much as I want it to happen, I just don't agree with that, but I agree with everything else.
So my concern from a legal perspective is if you deny the request, there need to be a basis, an articulated reason or denial.
I'm not denying.
And that articulated basis is because the onsite manager is not going to live in a stick-built structure. I'm honestly not sure how that, how that's going to be given as a meritorious argument that renders it compatible use to an incompatible use. And compatibility is the only thing I'm hearing raised as a, as an objection, at least, maybe I shouldn't, the only thing I'm hearing that's raised as an objection that's tied to the comprehensive plan, letting aside the issue of, you know, the fact that everything around that property, nothing around that property is residential except the Crystal Cove housing area. Letting aside that for a minute, if the only thing that makes this incompatible is the fact that the resident manager would be staying in an RV rather than a stick-built home, I'm having, I'm just, I'm having a difficult time understanding how I would defend that in terms of a denial. Should there be an appeal? And of course, that's what I always look at, is if there's an appeal, you know, what, where does the city stand in it?
Once again, I'm not, I'm for it, but I mean, you actually was my motion friendly to the recommendation that was made. And I stated that I'm not friendly to all the recommendations and my only qualm is the living situation. So just so we clear the record, the amendments that you're adding to your motion, are you just going to state those? The amendments that were recommended by our attorney, which were, he was about to restate what he was saying before that, before that acts for clarification on everything.
The amendment that I had talked about addressed the issue of the owner not being able to place RVs on-site and then have tenants come in basically and occupy them as campers. So, and I, the language that I had was that the park owner shall not provide RVs for use by tenants or campers.
I agree to that. And the third item that you wanted to add as far as the manager, that you want the manager to live on a, on a, on a.
My permanent structure. Is there a clubhouse? Will that be, that's my question.
That's a question I have. If, will that be any type of?
There'll be a bathhouse, not a clubhouse, there'll be a bathhouse. I mean, the, the reason why this works from the standpoint of the financials is because the existing facilities, places where people will meet, go have a drink, whatever, are across the way at the marina. So I wasn't going to build a clubhouse. I was going to build a bathhouse and a pool for the folks that are at the RV park. So, you know, that's why the compatibility works from the two, from the two sides of the road.
Can the manager be at the?
What's one of the, Mr. Brown?
Yeah, sure, I guess you could.
What structures on that? I'm trying to read, it's a very small, I thought it was a clubhouse.
There's no difference. It's no difference if he lives at Crystal Cove.
I just need a back clarification. I'm making a good.
It can get off of that Crystal Cove, so you won't have to.
We don't say bathhouse on the title.
Yes.
Okay, so you have a motion on the floor that didn't include any amendments and you had a second. You had a second, I'm sorry. So you had a motion, so you had a motion and a second that didn't include any amendments. Now, it is my understanding that essentially you want to make a new motion, you want to draw your motion in second and make a new motion that includes amendments?
Right.
Well, then somebody else needs to move the amended motion because if you made it, you're not supposed to be able to make the motion to amend.
Just withdraw your motion and restate it. Withdraw your original motion and restate it and make a newer.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to.
Just, you withdraw your personal.
First of all, I withdraw my original motion. And now I make a motion to accept. To pass on second reading? To pass on second reading. With? With the condition that was stated by our city attorney.
Would the commission have to approve the withdrawal of the motion?
No. No? He can withdraw, his motion is second. So he'd make a new motion to approve, but the new motion, and this is the approval on second reading, with the addition of additional terms. One of those terms has to do with the RV owner, the park owner, not providing RVs for use by tenants or occupants. Two, you want, you agreed with the statement or the issue of there having to be a concurrency certificate regarding the lift station.
Correct.
Three, that.
CO.
CO, no certificate of occupancy until all the improvements have been constructed.
Correct.
And then you wanted to add the, you wanted to add a fourth regarding the, where the onsite manager lived?
You want the onsite manager to live on the permanent structure on the premises, that he, the onsite manager to be allowed to live on only on a permanent structure on the premises, that on RV. What it says now essentially, if you leave it the way it is, it's the way you want it, that's what I agree to.
So you already modified that then?
Correct.
Okay, we've got a motion.
Second.
We're going on the second. Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions called, roll call.
No.
I'm sorry.
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Wade?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. Motion passed by Board of directors.
Thanks.
Moving into item five, actually rezoning ordinance. Item B, four B rezoning ordinance.
The amendments that were just made actually define the rezoning ordinance.
An ordinance of the City of Palatka Florida providing future land use map of the adopted inhabitants of plan be amended. An ordinance of the City of Palatka Florida providing the official zoning map of the City of Palatka Florida be amended as to that certain property located in Section 37, Township Nansau, Range 26 East, located just northeast at the intersection of Comfort Road and Crystal Cove Road, be rezoned from R3 multi-family residential to PUD ROS, planned unit development, recreation and. be rezoned from R three, multifamily residential, to PUD, ROS, planned unit development, recreation and open space, providing perseverance and providing an effective date.
Does that motion include the amendment that's previously stated? Motion on the floor and second. Is anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? Questions called, roll call.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
No.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes. Motion passes by vote of four to one.
So actually, for record purposes, Mr. Mayor, I guess we, we approved the amendments right. The rezoning ordinance and the passage of the PUD was actually where the amendment should have been discussed. The land use amendment, which was just changing the comprehensive plan, the future land use settlement of the comprehensive plan, really isn't a place where you can add those amendments. We were changing the comprehensive plan that, in that first discussion, and that was from C first, I mean, was it from R three? The, the future land use settlement was from R three to...
ROS.
To ROS.
That was the zoning, yes.
And that, no, that, I'm talking about the future land use that...
Future land use with R N, residential medium to R E C, recreation.
And that was the first ordinance that actually we had before us. And that doesn't really allow for discussions about the, the PUD terms that actually we engaged in under the future land use discussion.
Right.
So, just for, I guess, for clarification, um...
Let's revisit, just for the record, let's go ahead and revisit. Item four A.
Thank you.
Future land use amendment. I'll entertain a new motion on that item.
Hold on, wait for a second. You know, we have a future land use ma, a map as part of our comprehensive plan. A rezoning, what, the first criteria for rezoning should be that the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. So you had to pass a change in the comprehensive plan before we passed the rezoning. The change in the comprehensive plan was from residential medium to R E C, which are recreational, because you can have RV parks in recreational. So, once you changed that future land use settlement of the comp plan, then the rezoning would follow. And we got into discussion on the rezoning and the, no one on either side really talked about it. But actually, what we need to do is, for record purposes, just go ahead and agree that we're passing that ordinance, which was four A, which was the change in comprehensive, comprehensive plan, land use settlement from medium residential to R E C. So that should be a motion.
Okay, I made that motion, that we changed the policy.
Medium residential to R E C.
Just for housekeeping, right. Commissioner Campbell, make a motion. I will make a motion. To accept. To accept the conditions of the land...
The condition. It's actually four A, it's an ordinance, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, so just move, pass four A on second reading and so...
Motion on the floor and second. Now, the floor for public hearing. Seeing no one here, we'll close public hearing. Any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Oppose.
Oppose. Commissioner Moore, motion carried by vote of four to one. So both items have been covered. Moving on to item five, the agenda ordinance extending renewing the electrical franchise in the neighborhood of Clay Electric Cooperative.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Palaca, Florida, extending and renewing an electrical franchise previously granted to Clay Electric Cooperative Incorporated and providing an effective date.
So, who?
Second.
A motion on the floor and second.
I have, I have...
Is there, just a second. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Anyone for discussion?
I wanted to ask what thirty years of normal time we did the, the standing electrical franchise, 'cause it took several years of commissioners to that.
You still be here?
Thanks, guys. Uh, Matt?
Yes.
What does it, does it have something in there that says if the cost of living changes, you get a little more money from it?
It's actually based on the gross revenues of Clay Electric itself, five point nine percent of their gross revenues. So if there fees change, the gross revenue changes and so it's a percentage.
All right, that's good. And that's all I wanted, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Question?
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried unanimously. Moving on, item six of the agenda, city manager search. City manager search committee. Item A is to appoint city manager search committee. Gregory Collins, proposed by me. Ed Hestrom, by Vice Mayor Brown. Cynthia Ayer, by Commissioner Moore. Will Jones, by Commissioner Campbell. Allegra Kitchen, by Commissioner McCaskill. Entertained a motion at this time.
I would like to make a change for my, the person that I appointed. At first, he accepted with in decline. I would like to replace the authority card flag, who was already accepted. Not a commission, approved by the commission.
Make a motion to amend the changes for Commissioners Campbells, uh...
Motion to approve the slate with flag for Campbell?
Yes.
For, for John, for, for flag.
Flag for Jones.
Motion on the floor, is there second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried unanimously. Timeline for events. Item B.
Would like me to address that?
Yes, ma'am.
We have taken all the steps as prescribed. We've got, the applications are coming in at noon on November the eighth. What follows November the eighth are holidays and you all will be at the Northeast Florida League of Cities, or the League of Cities Congressional Convention or Legislative Convention from December the sixth to the eighth, and then we've got Christmas holidays. And the intent was to keep the timeline rather tight, because what happened the last time and a couple of previous times is you have long delays between receiving applications, scheduling first interviews and scheduling second interviews. These, these folks are all applying all over the place and you start to lose candidates as they drop out. So, the proposed schedule takes the holidays into consideration. I have sent this schedule out to the members, not Reverend Plag, but I've gotten three confirmations from the member of the, members of the search committee that this is acceptable to them. So Tuesday, November fourteenth, search committee meets to develop a list of semifinalist candidates. That's a little less than a week after the candidate applications are cut off. November fifteenth, we begin background checks on semifinalist candidates. On Thursday, November sixteenth, the commission approves the list of semifinalist candidates and that's when you can add a finalist to it. November thirtieth or December fourth, in other words, we skip the week of Thanksgiving and then come right back in the following week, I'm sorry, November twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth are semifinalist interviews. And then either November thirtieth or December fourth, that is the Thursday following those semifinalist interviews or the Monday following, schedule your finalist interviews. And so that way, people don't have to do a lot of traveling, people kind of try to put it all in one week. So it's up for discussion. Just trying to keep it tight and hopefully you guys can make a decision before you leave for legislative. And Mr. Cummings, who's, was the schedule, who was the tightest, he has agreed to all of this.
Any comments, concerns? Any things control during the committee, you got anything for us? Entertained a motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion on the floor and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried unanimously. Chief Shaw.
One second.
Chief Brown. Mr. Yul. I knew you would pass him down.
Interesting event going on at the airport this weekend. There's a reunion of fraternity of airborne, former military people. They're bringing in a large aircraft called the C forty-seven, which is a twin-engine, radial-engine, World War II vintage aircraft. There'll be a lot of activity, I think they're expecting about a hundred participants. They'll be setting up tents and barbecuing.
Anybody that's worried?
I didn't do it. I just lauded the fact that our chief of police had to get pizza to the little...
Anyway, just wanted to tell everybody about that event. You see big aircraft flying around all weekend, all starts tomorrow through Saturday. They're expecting about a hundred participants and they're coming from all over the country. Illinois, Nebraska, Texas.
They're gonna jump?
They're gonna jump.
Newspaper people are here for the internet.
Uh, yes. Great photo op with the newspaper this weekend out at the airport. And they're not jumping with the, with the square parachutes like you see these days. They're actually jumping on the old hollowed, round parachutes. So...
That's pretty cool.
It is, they, they have a good time. Art Schaefer, the owner of Sky Out Palaca, puts on a good show for them. So, very interesting. Come out if you can.
Commissioner Campbell, you can lock some of those off your bucket list. You can go get your pizza.
Be right there, could be a broken leg or two out there. See how they lay out, and then those air, the square parachutes.
It was good.
I'll keep it short tonight, I really just want the opportunity, I don't know that everybody has had the opportunity yet, but Ms. Kayla Wiley is with us here tonight. She's not gonna speak, I just want to introduce her. She is your water treatment plant superintendent. She's been with the city for about four years. And I just wanted to let you know that her and Sean La, Sean Lad recently passed the Public Works Institute. What do they call it again? It's a three-part training session where you go down for a total of ninety hours and it's meant to basically transition, transition you into a supervisory role. And Kayla and Sean just completed that program.
I'm so happy to see you.
Great job.
I come back and see you, you're in these nice positions.
Please don't say that.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm very grateful for this opportunity. It's, it's, I didn't expect this so soon, but I'm taking it full force. I hope to make a lot of changes going into the future for the better of the water treatment plant. So, you'll be seeing a lot of me, but thank you for the opportunity.
Start bottling our waters up, we don't have to buy none, that we'll be drinking out.
You know, bottled water regulations are not as strict as the regulations we adhere to.
Watch out. They need the facilities, 'cause they buy a lot of water right here.
Here we go. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any questions about some of our projects or ongoing efforts?
Give an update on paving at the riverfront.
Paving at the riverfront. Yes, it got pushed back one week, we're looking at the week of November eighth now. They're currently wrapping up the potable lines and some of the other items that kind of pushed that back on the schedule. But we do have all new potable lines completely around the hotel, riverfront square, Second Street, down to Laurel Street. And from there, we get taken all the way back up Laurel to Kirby and eventually down Kirby down to Palaca Heights, ahead of schedule probably by the end of next calendar year.
Just in case somebody's wondering about those blue lines on Third Street. You also pretty much have your, your chip store and bathroom is pretty much finished?
Yes, about three to four months ahead of schedule, so we need to get work on it.
It's kind of an operator agreement.
Yes, sir.
And, and I was just throwing a, a little plug out. My grandson and I went to your, the park down there on the, on the water, sunny afternoon. It was full.
Mm-hmm.
Did you use it though? It's got a thing that says nobody over twelve years of age and I'm a little bit over that, so. And I always follow rules, so.
You just got...
But it was full and the kids were in a line and, and doing very, very, very good job of keeping the line and nobody was, you know, breaking and they were using the whole park. And it was, and then there were adults, both under the, under the little pavilion and also on the bench. And it was just, it was, it was good, it was good to see.
That's great to hear.
Since we're talking about the waterfront, I'd like to ask you all to consider, we had the nonprofit called Pride of Palaca that we worked, we had the boat and the dock, some of the docks down there. The people who worked with, with me are almost all gone, but John, John and June, Hendrick, June is in the nursing home, but John has passed away. And Connie Foltis, who was a naval engineer, what kind of engineer you call them?
A marine engineer.
Marine engineer. They, they traveled with me places and we went all over at our own expense to try to find how to bring the right things and get that boat back into Palaca. And if y'all would name that dock, that the boat is gonna be docked at, after them, I would appreciate it. So, Hendricks and Foltis, his name was Connie Foltis, and John and June Hendrick. They were the people, it was quite a few people that worked on it, but they locked that with me everywhere I went, almost. So if y'all would think about it, I would consider it, I would appreciate it. I'll put something maybe in, um, I'd like to put a flag inside the terminal with the names of all the people that worked on this project, 'cause we had folks from Crescent City. I have a list of most of them, I think, with me. And if we do that, when we dedicate that building, 'cause all of that was volunteer, those people who came to those meetings. But those other, two people I, I talked to you about and, um, Norton, Jeff Norton was the other one. Worked tirelessly, we went everywhere to try to find the boats or find the money to get those boats. And if it hadn't been for them, they, they did business plans and everything to help us get, get Pride of Palaca.
If that's the will of the commission, Mr. Reynolds and I can probably look at finding some funds to put a dedication plaque inside the building. If that's the direction you'd like us to take.
We listen to the senior advisor.
Well, if I have to bid some money from somebody, somebody gonna help me do that, all right. I mean, I would like the list of people who worked on the project in there, but I'd like to have a dock named after them.
Supply the list, they'll supply the flag.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Want to talk about the Third Street project? Those emergency repairs?
Yes, we're still in the engineering phase and the feasibility of actually getting a structure placed at the end of Third Street or at the end of Fifth. I think I've had the opportunity to talk to a few of you about the fact that we may not have the right of way to place the structure where we need to place it. Right now, it's, just simply put, it's a massive structure, you can't precast it. So it means we had to reach out to another subcontractor that has the feasibility to de-water for a twenty-foot deep wet well. So, right now, we're still bypassing. Everything is still being done properly and safely. But we're still a couple of weeks out from having a defined budget and being able to move forward on that project. We are moving forward on the Riverwood issues around St. John's Avenue, all the way from Highway nineteen to Moody Road, as well as the sinkhole that is developing on River Street and the sinkhole that is on Third Street, which is somewhat associated with the fix that I described earlier. That contractor is TV Landmark, they gave us the most advantageous material and labor rates. And they mobilize, I believe, beginning of next week, they called in their locates this week.
Both of those are projects that we get qualified for primary investment.
Mr. Reynolds and I had a teleconference on Wednesday, is that correct, sir? And we described all the issues and projects that we are currently facing and also... And we described all the issues and projects that we are currently facing and also described some of those that we may have not surfaced yet and they seem to believe that those are one-hundred percent eligible.
Jesse, Level Street too, you know, y'all said y'all had a last meeting, y'all had sinkholes on Level Street, is that included?
That's already fixed. Yes, ma'am.
I know it's fixed. But anything y'all get, any money y'all get from FEMA, make sure you keep receipts. They, I keep telling y'all that, y'all, I just wanna let you know, 'cause the, there are several cities that's been fighting this thing for ten years.
And you receive some pictures.
Yep. Whatever you need to keep, to give to them, 'cause they come back and ask for proof and you need to have it.
We recently just got audited on some past events from, I believe, oh-six or oh-seven and just closed those storms out. So, yeah, we're, we're well aware that we have to retain those records and it is hard because sometimes you weren't involved and, you know, you don't know what happened. So we learned from that experience and we're keeping very thorough records now.
They tried to get it, give them the change and they keep it in three years, but they haven't gotten there with everybody yet. But they went back ten years on folks and there was a plenty of people that were going with places like Pembroke High and all that, making millions of dollars back.
Just to wrap up, debris removal, complete, was complete today. We picked up our last location on Oak Street, which we had to wait because that was a huge tree that fell, oak tree. Yes, that is complete. So if you see any files, please just call it in like normal to, normal to the Public Works lot, three two nine zero one zero seven and our staff will remove them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Shaw.
Yes, sir. As you all know, we, we are having our fall festival on Saturday. Hopefully as many of you as possible can attend. We are, we have a pretty good turnout and we're looking forward to the event, as well as trunk or treat. For trunk or treat, I asked if you guys are gonna attend, please get with Captain Newcomb. We are wanting to set up different areas for you so you can be able to be very visible and hand out candy with the size of that event.
Are they gonna wear costumes?
We hope that you do dress up in costumes so we can also get pictures and put on our Facebook to identify our, our commitment from our Commissioners.
Uh, Gene, not only that, if you, if you would give pictures and document a little bit, we need to see if we can get in our league magazine again.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We have someone designated to take pictures this year, strictly for pictures.
And then have it where we can get, get something to them.
Well, as, as Mr. Griffith spoke earlier, we need to make sure we document receipts and pictures. Commissioner Borum gave out a lot of candy last year, so we need somebody to take pictures of all the candy he's handing out.
He gave out extras.
I gave out ration.
Um, just on the law enforcement side, we had two good events that I want to make note of. Architect's Division, uh, quick thinking with the Detects Division, acting fast, was able to recover a very expensive four-wheeler and also make an arrest on the one that was stolen earlier in the week. And also our relationship with the Marshals assisted in capturing a violent felon that actually fled to North Carolina. So, again, we are doing work around the city and getting things solved and solving cases.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Strong's.
Nothing.
Commissioner Borum, these are mysteries.
I spent the day with students for most of it. Mr. Campbell, Mr. Campbell wants to kind of start taking this over, so I'm, as you said.
Ducking out.
No, not checking out at all, just, you know, happy that, and we miss you, you know. They're waiting on board, Gene.
Black accounting, dude.
No work, no eating.
That's why we were a little discombobulated at the beginning of the meeting. I usually have a little bit of time to run back there and get everything else ready, but, but it, it worked out. So thank you for covering.
Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, yes, sir. As Mr. Griffith said, we had our, what we call the exploratory call for Hurricane Irma earlier this week. We've set up the second, longer meeting with them, which I guess we can basically call the kickoff meeting for November fifteenth, I believe it is. And once we have that meeting, we'll have sixty days to identify any other issues that may, may pop up. So we'll have until middle of January, which Mr. Griffith and I feel is a, is a good timeframe. Hopefully if any other issues continue to pop up, you know, they'll be well within that timeframe and so that we can make sure to include them in discussions with FEMA. So, they all, they did also say we'll be using a new grants portal that they have designed and they said is very much more user-friendly and streamlined and it keeps track of all of that data and the invoices and the backup documentation, Commissioner Brown. So, we'll get to experience that before the hurricane. Also, Commissioners, you may have seen, we're having some of the, some of the work done to City Hall here to accommodate having the employees from the annex next door come over. Hopefully those improvements will be done by the next commission meeting and, and everybody will be over here in, in one building.
So what happens in another building?
Well, for the meantime, that building will be used for file storage and other storage just as it is currently being used for probably more than half of the building, so, but that will be, again, like I said, discussions that the commission, at least I think, needs to have about a planning session. As you can see tonight, we've probably, we've probably outrun our meeting room and might want to have discussions about, you know, wholesale changes to either of these buildings to try to accommodate larger meetings and that, that sort of thing.
Ma'am, would it be difficult to put speakers in the, in the vestibule out here and also outside this area for the overflow, people to hear a little bit better what's going on inside here? Would that be a big problem?
Um, yeah, we, we need an entirely sound system, actually, and that would be, that would be something that we can definitely look at doing.
Well, last, last meeting, I guess, somebody stopped me outside and asked about, said they couldn't hear and I thought speakers out there would be an easy thing to, easy way of fixing that, it wouldn't cost a bunch of money.
That and a television, I mean, a monitor, like a screen.
Several monitors that face the audience.
The question is, before we start doing skin resouring in here, you know, is there a higher, better use of this particular room? So those are some of those one of things we gotta look at.
And the consideration for if that wall, like a barren wall, maybe open that up and that probably could have been, that additional capacity probably could have been something that may, could have been used or, but again, we're spending money, we need to spend it down in the.
That's something that we have discussed internally. Mr. Griffith and I have walked around, you know, both of these buildings several times and talked about the potential uses for both of these buildings. Having everybody in this building freeing up that other building, when we have these discussions, if we decide make that building the meeting hall or make that building all of the administrative offices or vice versa, that building will be empty, we could do the work in that building so that we could, you know, afford to have everybody move over there while we're working here or vice versa. And so it will make what we think things, things a little bit smoother, but, you know, those, those discussions are definitely, I would say, need to be had in some sort of visioning session where we can get input from all of the commission on what the commission may want to see, you know, for the future, thinking very long-term, twenty, thirty years, maybe even longer, that these, this location of these buildings and that sort of thing.
Son, you could probably hook up something for free.
A little plug right there. That hallway out there, take care of it all.
Only if you give me free legal advice, Don.
I will.
Do you really need it?
That's all I need. Commissioner Borum?
Uh, nothing today.
Commissioner McCaskill?
Nothing.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, just real quick, I've had the opportunity to work with John Florida graduates this past week. The actual director for the state of Florida, who happens to be through the Florida Foundation and Endowment Foundation, the two buildings on, off Eleven Street and Madison, that falls under there, she's gonna be reaching out to the City Commission. There's some opportunities for some Brownsfield-type grants based on when they build the property. There were tanks that was under.
From the gas.
From the gas station, so there, she said, they've reached out to her, so she wants to reach out to the city to see what we can do together. So she's going to be making contact with the member.
Mr. Griffith?
With, I'll make sure that she knows to make contact with Mr. Griffith.
You talking about where her building is? Right, with the gas station?
Yeah, it's a Brownfield area anyway, ba, based on the area that it's in.
Right, but they have, there, there's money that we get, there's.
Is it across the street?
There's money that we can get or possibly get as a result with that. So she's gonna be reaching out, I'll make sure that she knows. Her name is Heather. Also, I just want to extend a kudos to Betsy. Betsy did a phenomenal job with the kids on today. I take no credit outside of getting the kids here. The partnership with the two schools was welcomed even amongst the students. So kudos to everything that, that Betsy did from the last minute of ordering food, current Vicki, Ms. Vicki, excuse me, to all of that, so thank you.
That's where that piece was from.
Yeah. It brought it to the lake.
He must have gotten the address mixed up in the computer, 'cause we did have it delivered down here earlier. Yeah, they, they brought it here.
Right, that's, that's a good one. That's it. Anything else?
That's it.
Vice Mayor Brown.
I just said I'll be out of town, I'm going to town on the other day, I probably be back Sunday.
Mr. Griffin? Booker Park project?
Yes, sir.
Any updates for us? You go from the back of the room.
Thirty percent completed right now. They're almost done with all the clearing work at, when that's.
I found the money for it one time.
You can find it again for us, we'll take it. We'll take it.
All right, I got that file started.
So.
Just make sure, we went bad, that's why they had to, you covered it over one night. The next day we went, no food.
Mike, Mary, you, you good? You got everything? Anything else? I'm done.
Don't need a way.